Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this special council meeting. This evening, we will pay attention to Councilwoman Duncan for the invocation. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
No, he didn't forget. He called me with an emergency like 20 minutes ago and is not able to be here. So...
We can have a moment of silence.
That would be fine. Have a moment of silence instead. I'm sorry. I don't know if anyone heard me. I apologize. The individual who was going to be here this evening called me 20, 25 minutes ago and had a family emergency and was unable to attend this evening for the invocation. So, we are invocationless, I guess. So with that, I think we should have a moment of silence. Is there anything in particular, Councilwoman?
No, that's just what people do.
No, that's fine. We will do that.
Coaching.
No, it's fine. Thank you very much. We'll hold that now.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We proceed with the roll call.
Mayor DeLaEsla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Valdivia Akala?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Here.
Padilla?
Here.
Nager?
Here.
Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
And Lesser. We have nine present.
We have one council member that has indicated that will not be able to join us tonight. So, we do have quorum. We will proceed with the meeting. At this point in time, we move into the action items. The first action item of the circuit ruling.
It is a public hearing to obtain citizen input on the city of Topeka's five-year 2021 to 2025 consolidated action plan and fiscal year 2021 annual consolidated actual plan and budget.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are here to conduct a public hearing. We've had presentations related to the five-year consolidated action plan already by staff, and the plan has been available for the public to review. So, at this point, would just basically summarize that this is a five-year consolidated action plan, includes the program plans for approximately $21.4 million in HUD grant funding for the planned period 2021 through 2025. The annual action plan is approved each year during the regular budget process, which outlines the specific funding for each program type in the upcoming year. So, this is a hearing related to the five-year plan.
We do have one person signed up to speak in public comments. If Ms. Teresa Miller, please approach the bench. Yes.
Would you like to open the public hearing and just have her comment as part of that?
So, at this point in time, we open up the public hearing. The public hearing being opened, you do not have to sign up to speak specifically about this item. However, if you have an issue that you would like to share with regard to this item, you are free to come and speak on this. We did have somebody signed up to speak, and that person is Ms. Teresa Miller, so she will be the opening comments. Thank you, Lisa.
I'm here to represent my NIA and the people that are in my NIA on this. I've worked with NIA's over 15 years, constant. One year, I backed out, and it was the biggest mistake I've ever made. The change of the funding that is happening and the way the grants are doing is going to harm the NIA neighborhoods deeply. By pulling away from the empowerment grant, which every NIA, all 20 some of them, will be able to apply for, they won't be able to do that anymore. Only five NIA's out of all 20 of them will be allowed to apply for the two grants that they have. You have to be in the last five years of the SORT grant, getting the SORT grant funding in order to apply for the two grants that they're wanting to come up with. That's not fair to the other 16 NIA's. Empowerment grant is very important for the neighborhoods, and that is... Now, I'll give you an example. Lyman Road, they built the brand new Walgreens, and they had the cottages there. But guess what? There was no sidewalk connecting the cottages to Walgreens, and at that time, there was an hourglass-shaped road there that the people from the cottages were getting in their scooters out in that hourglass street and keep from... I don't know how they kept from getting hit. So, I applied for an empowerment grant. I was granted $75,000 to fix that problem, and I stressed safety, 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 because somebody had been hit there and killed. So, not only did they give me the sidewalk, the city took it upon themselves, because they're getting ready to put wire lines or some type of lines in the ground there, they redid all of Lyman Road there. That's what an NIA does, but we need that empowerment grant to help us, help you. The empowerment grant was made for low-income people to make up for what the city does not take care of in neighborhoods. That's what the empowerment grant's for. The way you guys are setting me up now, nobody's going to get any help except for five NIA's, and that's not fair. That's... To me, it's like discrimination against the other NIA's. We already have a weatherization program at Community Action, a good program. We already have programs for half the things that they're changing these programs to. So, I don't understand why we're taking the money out of people's hands that could benefit just so a few people can get the funds to enjoy. Because a SORT grant, you're already getting all that. You're already getting weatherization. You're already getting fixing your house. You qualify for all that stuff in the SORT grant fund. And for only the five that had the last SORT grants, doesn't make sense to me because they already got that within the last five years. It should be the neighborhoods that haven't got it be able to qualify for those things. That's why the empowerment grant was there, to help the neighborhoods, to help the city by putting sidewalks, curbs, gutters, whatever we can help you with, but it helps the neighborhood. It beautifies and puts pride in our neighborhoods where we have been forgotten, because I'll guarantee you, if you go on my side of North Topeka, it's not like down at Noto. There's a lot of roads and a lot of streets that are like driving in minefields. There's so many holes. Nothing's going to be done because they're not on projects for years. We got drainage problems. We have all sorts of problems. But by having an empowerment grant, I could get some of that stuff done, but it's being taken away. So, that's all I want to tell you. I don't feel that we should be doing what we're doing with the empowerment grant and taking those funds away from HUD.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question of Ms. Miller. Ms. Miller, thank you for coming tonight. I know that you're in route...
Honey, I can't hear you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Can you hear me now?
Just a little bit, yeah.
Okay. I don't want to take off my mask.
No, no.
I will.
That's a little better.
So, I know that you're in between meetings right now.
Yes.
I just want to get an understanding. How were you informed so that the public can know? How were you informed as NIA president about this change in the empowerment grants?
In the CAC meeting, it was brought up that this was going to happen, because they had been asking us what our opinions are. They gave us like a survey to go through and our opinions. We had a CAC meeting at the beginning of this month. There was not enough for a quorum to have that, but they took our information anyway. They shouldn't even held the meeting, but they did. And nobody has... I haven't seen... I'm sure the response is out there what's what, but most of what I heard, everyone spoke up and said they did not want to lose the empowerment grant. I have not heard an NIA said that they want to lose the empowerment grant. So, I don't know why we should lose the empowerment grant, because it will hurt the neighborhoods.
Okay. And also, so the bottom line is, you guys did not get to actually vote because there wasn't a quorum on it.
Yeah, there wasn't enough people.
Okay. And would you have had a vote if there was enough people there?
Pardon me?
Would you have been able to have a vote not knowing?
Yeah, they took our vote anyway, and I don't think they should have. And they took the information from there and ran with it.
Okay. And we know in your section of North Topeka, there is a number of issues in streets like Gordon, on streets like Lyman, Taylor, Tyler. We could go on and on, and so, you know, plus lack of curb and gutters and all of that. That is where I get the most of my calls, is curb and gutter in the bad streets in North Topeka. So, I do appreciate you coming up to speak because I know how committed that you are.
I got to get to the other meeting, yes.
And thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Emerson and then Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala.
Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor, actually.
So, it's okay. Thank you, Mayor. I guess I was not necessarily... And it was probably in the... All the information we got, and I apologize for not knowing it, but I guess I'm aware of staff could speak to the reason for this change and what are the... Why are they advocating for this change? Is that something someone could... Would be able to speak to?
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, the reason that we made the change is there was a looking at, a desire to help with some housing issues, and with the housing study that was done, there was a lot of talk about the idea of doing a weatherization program. And so, we decided to shift as part of our spending of the CDPG money, a portion of it to weatherization, $77,000 going to a weatherization program, and then $60,000 staying with empowerment. And so, it was an effort to assist low-to-modern income homeowners to be able to do improvements to their homes as a program. And so, that was the reason for the change, or the recommendation to change.
If I could please follow up, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, then I can understand that. Mr. Trout, I guess my question is, though, as Ms. Miller brought up, why would it only be... So, we still have the empowerment grant, but only people who've had the SORT grant the last five years can apply for the funds? Is that correct?
I may have to ask either Cory or Monique to be able to give more on that. They understand the details of what was proposed better than I do.
Okay, that'd be good, yeah, because I'll tell you, just on the face of it, that also seems to be kind of patently unfair. The people who've gotten the most money the last five years are the only ones who can apply for this, but again, I don't know that to be the truth, so...
Right.
I don't know that to be the facts, I guess, here.
And we can relook at what the criteria that's being used for that. I know that we can go back and look at that. The applications are not out yet, as far as I remember, and so, we could look at what we're doing as far as establishing the criteria in that respect.
Thank you, City Manager.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, after talking to members of the NIA in my district, and I don't know what's been... What the dialogue has been in Karen or other people's districts, but they are very concerned about these empowerment grant monies. My concern and confusion is that Community Action has a wonderful weatherization program. They have actually increased their staff in weatherization and have added additional funding for it. So, I don't know if there's different layers or levels of weatherization that we look at, but if there is any duplication of services, I think with as tight as money is right now, number one, we should avoid duplication of services. Number two, we should be giving the NIA's as much money as we can, because I do believe that this part of... In District Two, this part that Teresa is talking about, is considered an intensive care part of the city, and it's not to say that she's going to get an empowerment grant or her NIA is going to get it every time around, but it just really does not speak well to me of how we try to encourage NIA's and then are trying to cut their funding source. The other thing that I see on here when I was looking through the consolidated action plan is that that money, empowerment monies used for the weatherization, those were being pledged through CDPG funds, and it makes reference, and I don't have the printout, so forgive me, I just wrote notes, funds going to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So, I guess my question is, can Cory speak to this? Is Cory here?
Cory should be.
It's on page... It's on page 233.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Hi, Cory.
Yes, if I may.
Yes.
Councilwoman Valdivia Akala, the reference to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund was, and maybe it's not clear, so I apologize, but that was our attempt to get matching dollars from the $77,000. So, we are currently in the process of reaching out to businesses in the community to try to match the $77,000 so we can increase that dollar amount to help more individual families.
Okay. Can I ask you a follow-up question on that?
You sure can.
Okay. So, is this the first amount that's gone by the city into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Is this the first amount, the $77,000, that has been put by the city into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
So, the CDPG money would not necessarily be in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. It would be the matching dollars.
Mm-hmm. So, you would get dollars matched, and if $70,000 or $77,000, and please bear with me because I'm on a learning curve here.
Sure.
If you got matching dollars, then that money would be put into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
Yes, councilmember.
Okay. Can you explain to me any difference that you're aware of between the weatherization program that the city of Topeka has versus a weatherization program that maybe Community Action has, because I know you partner with them quite a bit?
We do partner with them quite frequently. My recent conversation with Community Action is that their weatherization program is not ... It's not active at the current moment due to staffing. They will not have an active program, according to the email that I received until July of 2021. Even with that, they will have $100,000 dedicated to weatherization, serving five counties. And so, as you can see, that that's not a lot of money for five counties. They do report that the majority is in Shawnee County, but there's still some need. Even with that, they predict a waiting list of at least three months before people can get weatherization.
Okay. Thank you for that. I do... Probably sometime tomorrow, I do want to get with staff or whoever on an email that I received from Tony that does not seem to jive with what you're telling me right now. And being on the board of Community Action, that was not my understanding, that they were not running anything at this point. So, definitely, I think we need to have some more communication on that, and I definitely believe that this is not a good move for us to make. I think taking any money away again from empowerment grants, and also, well, there's more... Something I wanted to know about HUD funds, and if those HUD funds stay separate, if they go into the general fund, but I'll ask that later. But thank you for that, Cory, and I'll just communicate with you more tomorrow. Thank you, Mayor.
At this point in time, we have no other individuals signed up to speak, but if anybody wants to talk about the consolidated action plan, this is the opportunity that you have to do so.
Taylor?
Councilwoman Ortiz? And then Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had asked staff for the amount that Tony's group puts into this, and I never got that amount. It might have just been said, but you guys are muffled in the chamber. I know I'm having a hard time. So, my question is, how did we come up with this amount?
Well, it was basically... It was looking at doing basically a split of the funding that was there for empowerment. It's not an exact split, with it being $77,000 versus $60,000, but it was just a number that we picked. I won't say it had a lot of scientific thought to it, but it was a split of the numbers.
And is that the only weatherization program that we have? Is... Oh, my God. The weatherization program, is there any more? Does Cory... Can you tell me that?
I think Cory can explain some of the other programs. Some of the emergency action programs that we have would probably accomplish some weatherization things, but I can let her explain it better for her programs. She manages them. Cory?
Yes. Councilmember Ortiz, we do have an emergency repair program, which does some things related to weatherization, but it's not specific weatherization. So, furnace replacement, for example, anything that is immediate health and safety can be used for the emergency repair program. So, furnace going out in the middle of the winter, we could do furnace replacement with that. In the middle of the summer, we would not be able to do that. So, the weatherization would free up some opportunities to prevent people from being in that situation in later months. So, that's what we're looking at for... But siding insulation, replacing windows, those are things with the emergency repair we would not be doing because it's not immediate health and safety.
Okay. And Cory, I don't know if you know this, I turned Sasha on to a lady out of Linden that we could go to and get all these weatherization issues are done, you know? What happened to that program? Because there was over a million dollars there, and I know that it was like slowly going down, and Shawnee County residents could qualify for that. Do you know what happened to that?
I believe you were referring to the program in Osage County that was offering assistance in other counties. They were slow to get that money out, and I have not recently heard where they're at with spending on those funds.
Okay. Well, the last I heard, that they couldn't give that money away, and it wasn't very... You know, we just hadn't informed the people of it. You know, matter of fact, when I gave that to Sasha, she even questioned if we could be a part of that, and we can't. So, if we have two entities, if we have Community Action and then we have that, I just don't understand why we would use so much money to pour into this, you know, another thing for weatherization. I understand that you're trying to do match money, but what I'd really like to do is see about privatizing, because when we get people to invest, that's when they'll start caring about it. And I think there's a lot of people that are waiting to invest, to see how they can help to start building that fund. So, I'm not so sure if this is the way that we can go. And if we approve this, then it'll be approved for the next five years. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, it would. We also have the opportunity to do a substantial amendment if we foresee that the program is not working as intended. That's something that we can approve at a later time if needed.
Because I'm going to be honest, I don't get a lot of calls of people that want weatherization, and when I do, I send them to Community Action, or I give them that application. So, that's just my two cents. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. This is really good discussion, and it points up some of the thoughts that I've had, which is, if you think about it, we've been talking about the housing study and the new... What we're going to do with that. And at our last meeting, we set what eventually was an agreement to have an implementation plan for the Affordable Housing Study back in 120 days, and further set that up that the residents, the staff, the providers, and the council would all be at the table to talk about that. So many of the pieces that are being considered for that affordable housing activation are so linked with what's in this consolidated plan, and further, there are a lot of other things that have changed in recent years, or over the last 10 or 20 years, really. This con plan has been the same for about 20 years, and I'll go through it briefly, but what I think we need to do is to not approve this next week, either have staff just hang on to it or vote to delay it so that the approval syncs up with the approval of the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan, and all of us get to talk about these issues with each other and sync these things up so that when we approve them both, they will be related to one another, because there are carryforwards in this con plan that have really outlived their time, and this is in my opinion. And I'll give some examples. The SORT program is 20 years old. When Mrs. Miller was talking about the situation, had the SORT program been different than it was today, or not there, they might have gotten all their streets redone in North Topeka West instead of focused all the money on two streets. What they need is mill an overlay and get rid of all the little potholes that are holding water. There's an opportunity... When SORT was created, we didn't have the House and Sales Tax Program. There wasn't a street program, but there is now, and they should be rolling up for that. We also didn't have a sidewalk program, and a lot of neighborhoods used SORT for sidewalks. We now have a sidewalk program, and the neighborhoods are identified in order, and there is flex money in that program to bid for if you feel like there's a certain spot, like Lyman Road was in North Topeka West, to put an infill sidewalk in. We always had infill sidewalk money, $150,000 or $200,000 a year, and then... And so, what was happening is the NIA's were totally focused on SORT and not going after the money, you know, not asking for prioritizing in money that was there in the city's programs themselves. I think it's time for us to relook at those and sync them up. People have made some really good points about weatherization. Part of that housing side plan is just to decide what the need really is and whether those would be standalone weatherization projects or whether they would be linked with a rental rehab program or just how we would do it and how many. We haven't done that yet, but the two plans need to go together. With the Park Department taking over the Parks and Rec in the course of these recent con plans, now they're doing park things. That's what neighborhoods did with park... Enhancement empowerment money, whatever those grants are. I always cross them over. Anyway, we need to relook at what... If there was to be a pot of money within what our now restructured department looks like as well, what would it be for? What's reasonable? It's been pretty clear to me... I have 10 neighborhoods in my district, of whom seven are NIA's, that people were confused, that there was a proposal, that nobody really settled on why it would change or what would be different, or whether they were comfortable with these alternate uses of the money. I think in this 90 days that we all are committed to work heavily on the Affordable Housing Plan, we should work on these together and sync them up. We have had the commitment for that already, the way the task force was set up. Any or all of us from the council could be actively involved. I can speak for myself, and I think Councilwoman Valdivia as well, but those of us that have a lot of neighborhoods, I just want to be at the table with them. This back and forth has just been wearing, and I don't think it's been productive, most importantly, for the neighborhoods. So, I think I covered the points I wanted to make. I just think we're ready, and my understanding from Cory is that this five-year plan does not have to be submitted until December 31st, so we do have time. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. In so many ways, I agree with Councilwoman Hiller as well, and would like to... In so many ways, I agree with Councilwoman Hiller as well, and would like to not vote on this and have this sync with this one hundred and twenty days that we're looking at. I did want to say that I did find the email from Toni Stottermeyer, Executive Director at Community Action, dated July thirteenth, and I had asked her about her, their weatherization. She says, "We have three full-time employees in our weatherization program, along with another seven employees that support the program by doing various tasks, like customer intake, data entry, oversight, grant reporting, et cetera. Weatherization is oftentimes confused with winterization. Our program originates from the Federal Weatherization Assistance Program operated by the Department of Energy. It is a highly technical, highly regulated program that works with the whole building envelope," that means, "and appliances. Our program scientifically measures and reduces air infiltration and health hazards while also making demonstrated improvements in energy efficiency, reductions in utility bills, and improved comfort and usability of the household. The City of Topeka, to my understanding, doesn't operate the same or even similar program. The only program I'm aware of at the city level is the property maintenance violation rehab program, which indicates that recipients can receive weatherization, but the program is essentially focused on helping lower-income people with property violations with resources to fix those violations. Thus, it's an apple-to-oranges comparison." So I would just say, again, I think that community action has a really strong program. It seems to me that it is a running program. I'm sure Toni would be more than willing to meet, but I just wanted to let Cory and others know that, that I found the email. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Additional comments or questions from the body?
Yep.
Councilwoman Duncan?
Can we just get a clarification from staff on what the deadlines for this need to be, so that we're not missing any sort of federal, you know, windows?
Yeah, it is correct. It is December thirty-one, and Cory has some, what she learned from, that she can provide in response to that related to community action. So Cory?
Yes, City Manager, Councilmembers. I did receive an email from Tiffany Jarvis, who is the housing person at Community Action, who, who did explain to me the details that I spoke of earlier, which is, they have staffing issues, and their program would not run until July of 2021, and even then, it's a hundred thousand for the five, the five counties surrounding us, or four other counties surrounding us. So I'd be happy to share that, Councilmember Valdivia Afala, or any other council members, and maybe we can get some clarification on what is actual on that. So I, I do think we need some follow-up on that.
So, yeah, bottom line is December thirty-one, so we do have some time to be able to, in the past, it's been a habit that we would approve this around the same time that we approved the city budget, and so that's why we're bringing it forward at this time of the year. But there would be time for us to be able to consider this at a later date.
That's great. We'll make sure we're not missing this.
No.
This qualifies us from the other money we get for this thing.
Understood. This is very important for us.
Additional comments or questions? Do we have any, anybody from the public? Remember, this is a public hearing, and whether you signed up or not, you do have the ability to come and speak to the council with regards to this consolidated action plan. If anybody in the public wants to speak with regards to this, then thank you so much for doing that. And the third time, if you would like to speak on this issue of the consolidated action plan. Seeing none, at this point in time, the public hearing is closed. The council may proceed with their pleasure on how they want to move on this item. We're done.
There's, there's no action in that, Mayor.
Oh, gosh, it's an action item. So sorry.
Yeah, it's action for the public hearing, but we don't have to.
We move on to the next item, item B of the public brief.
It is a public hearing for the purpose of hearing and answering objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed City of Topeka 2021 operating budget.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't go through too much tonight, but I do want to, because this is more of a public hearing, and we want to hear from the public, that's what tonight's about. But I do want to remind people that what we are looking at is our general fund budget, along with our other funds that make up our operating budget. So we have a ninety-six-point-nine-million-dollar general fund budget. We, based on the direction that was provided by the governing body, we had to make substantial cuts based on the actions that we took within the various departments of the city. We're in a position, though, I can say that we're able to bring forward a budget that has no mill levy rate increase, and still be able to accomplish the majority of the, the work that we need to do as our city. So with that, I'll let you continue on with public hearing. Thank you, Mayor.
At this point in time, we are opening up a public hearing, which means that anybody in the audience, whether they signed up or did not sign up, are able to speak with regards to this specific item. We do have two individuals who did sign up to speak on this item, the first one being Ms. Michaela Sanders.
I hope you're all doing well at home there. Hello? Thanks for allowing me to speak today. So I serve as co-president with Leilani Gray of the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board, and the board has. This one?
Just be close to.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. So Leilani and I serve as co-presidents of the Topeka Sustainability Advisory Board, and the board has prepared a letter that I'd like to read. The sustainability, and it's going around as well, if you'd like a copy. The Sustainability Advisory Board understands there are many known and unknown constraints that must be considered in developing the next budget for the City of Topeka. We urge you to put sustainability at the center of those considerations in order to truly plan for the future. By considering each, each decision through the lens of sustainability, you will make decisions not only good for the near term, but good for the long-term future of our community. Sustainability relates to people, planet, and profit. Topeka has an opportunity to adapt methods used by many cities in planning for success. We know you will consider investment in utility infrastructure. We've encouraged necessary investment in the past and do so again now. We know you will consider health, safety, and justice. We urge you to remember the toll of environmental impacts and the need for environmental justice, from air quality to walkability. And we know you must consider personnel. We encourage you to think of all sustainability efforts as essential rather than nice to have. For years, we have encouraged the city to hire a full-time sustainability coordinator. This year, a part-time sustainability coordinator role was established, but eventually scaled down as duties were reassigned. We all know what gets measured gets done. Sustainability work is no different. A staff member would ensure coordinated, effective change can occur. In the coming weeks, we will finalize our report to the council and hope to return with recommendations related to public health, energy use, vehicle fleet, and public education, among others. But we know we won't make as much progress without a dedicated staff position and coordinated intention within city departments. We stand ready to support city staff in the work ahead. We all are committed to Pekins, who believes sustainability plays a crucial role in the improved health, safety, economic opportunity, and pride of our entire community. Sincerely, Sustainability Advisory Board members. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy.
Michaela, thank you so much for speaking. Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thanks, Mayor. Michaela, thank you so much for coming to speak up. I've already said to you and Lonnie that expect me to be attending your Zoom meetings. I kind of fell off the bus that way in the past several months with everything that has come up at the council level. Sustainability, taking care of our earth, teaching our children about taking care of our earth, and doing the real actions that are needed to help create healthier communities, we know is the important work that you all do. It is sad, it saddens me that after so many years of you all being in existence, because I think that this goes back to after Deborah Swank left City Council, that she was put into the position of, of chairing it, that you have not had a position, a full-time position, and a lot of times, I've seen the hard work you all have put into those early morning meetings, and really have pushed forth an agenda with a little success, and it's not for your all's lack of trying. So I just appreciate you coming up to talk and understand that I will work to get more people on board as well, because we know this is a pressing issue. So thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Anton Arns.
I have a quick question, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Councilwoman Duncan?
No, you're good. No, okay, so the comment in here is, this year, a part-time sustainability coordinator role was established, but eventually scaled down, those duties were reassigned. Can we get an explanation, was that a position that was created and reassigned to other things eventually, or a position we had, and someone was given those duties? There's some explanation there.
Thank you, Councilman Duncan. The, there was a management analyst position in the Utilities Department, that he has some experience from his previous job in Fort Collins, Colorado, working in sustainability. So I asked him, because I was the staff person for a period of time, a real connection that they had, I asked him to start going and attending those meetings, and so there was some progress that was made in various initiatives that they had. With the transitions that have been occurring in the Utilities Department, he has been given more duties and responsibilities, and so it's taken away from his ability to be able to support the Sustainability Commission. And we are looking, or we're going to be looking at what other position within Utilities Department could assist them. It may not be this individual, but I still feel it's important that we provide some staff connection to this commission.
Good evening. My name is Anton Arns. I am a member of Trinity Presbyterian Church. I'm also a member of Topeka Jump. I'm here today to speak in favor of public funding for the Housing Trust Fund in the 2021 budget for the City of Topeka. Ultimately, the goal is to finally address Topeka's systemic housing crisis. When Topeka provides quality housing to Topeka residents at every income level, we create economic development and improve quality of life. We at Topeka Jump are aware that you have challenging decisions to make about the budget this year. The truth is, we've had to say that every year since we started this campaign in 2015, and for one reason or another, we will likely be here doing the same thing next year and every year that follows. Your job is never easy, but it is the time right now for the Housing Trust Fund to take priority, and we are asking the governing body to do two things. Number one, support Mayor Michelle Del Isla's proposal to hold a portion of reserves at the Topeka Community Foundation, which over time will accumulate enough interest to be a long-term funding source for the trust fund. We look forward to hearing more about how the Community Foundation can provide long-term funding. And two, our second task, our second ask is for one or more of you to direct the city manager to put in allocation for the Housing Trust Fund in the 2021 budget. Does Jump want that allocation to be two million, as the housing study suggested? Of course! In fact, we know that in order to comply with your reserve policy, you need nineteen million dollars in reserves, and this could provide over two million to be spent on the current affordable housing crisis, which is just as much a threat to Topeka as COVID is. Yes, we want two million dollars in the trust fund in 2021. We have already heard council members who support the need to act now on housing by making a good faith effort that gets the ball rolling, as Councilmember Ortiz and others spoke to in previous meetings. We like the image of Councilmember Nager that she placed in our minds when she said, quote, "How do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time," end quote. We are asking one of you to get that ball rolling, or maybe to take that first bite, by asking the city manager to make an allocation into the trust fund in the 2021 budget. Then Bill Fieander and his team will be set up to capitalize on your investment, starting January first, 2021. The governing body set a goal to evaluate, retool, and deploy incentive programs that will grow business development as a means to increase employment opportunities for all citizens. The Housing Trust Fund is an incentive program. While Topeka needs high-end housing for business executives, it also needs quality, quality low and moderate-income housing to support, to support factory jobs on the outskirts of town, young professionals with good-paying jobs, who might also have student loan debt or credit card debt, and small business owners who are getting off the ground. We implore you to take this courageous step.
Sir, do you need more time?
Fifteen seconds. We will have your back.
You could, you could wrap it up, sir, because, yeah.
Thank you very much for your time.
Oh, I didn't want, I didn't mean for him to get cut off. I just said that he could wrap it up.
He did.
I'm still here.
Because you said fifteen seconds, it would have taken us longer for us to call the, the vote than for you to wrap up. So that's what I meant. I apologize, sir.
Have fun. By ensuring we all have a safe and secure place to call home, we can enable our neighborhoods to thrive. When residents thrive, communities thrive. Please support the mayor's proposal and ask the city manager to put the Housing Trust Fund in the 2021 budget. I stand for questions.
Any questions? Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thanks, Mayor. Actually, I don't know if this is a question for you, if this is for the mayor, because I'm wondering if you could just explain a little bit slower about your idea on how you saw money going to TCF and then building. I am assuming you're meaning the interest and all of that, and then can you just articulate that just a little bit slower for me?
Absolutely. So the idea would be that we already have reserve funds that are not being moved, and they're critical for us to have the, the rating that we have. So we, the, the, one of the proposals would be for us to allocate some of those dollars to be stored at the Topeka Community Foundation, and the capital itself, the original capital, not to be touched, but allowed to be used as a leverage point for our community to be able to figure out ways of matching it, to include us being able to find allocations from time to time that we can bring in to the Community Foundation, so that then the Community Foundation can continue investing those dollars in semi-secure mediums that would allow us to get a little bit more interest, and we all know that right now the interest market is not tremendous. But that eventually, what we would do is that once we get to the threshold of the two million dollars that we want, we return back to the city that three million dollars that we started with, and then we do the same thing, but use fifty percent of the interest into the community to leverage every year, and then the other fifty percent to add back to the total, so we constantly have a pool of funds that keeps growing in perpetuity.
So would that mean that as this fund continues to grow, that the funds would not be used until it hit a certain maximum amount, or like every quarter or every six months, as, as the dividends, or however you want to articulate this, would go, would come, would come out and would go into the housing fund and could start being used?
So we would not actually ever touch the initial principal. What we would do is ensure that we have more money every year. That's why we would put fifty percent of the dividend back into the, the original pot, so that we have every year the ability to grow the amount of dividend that we could present back to the community, and then use these dollars as leverage for the private sector and the nonprofit sector to come by our side to help us with our housing stock.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Heller?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, I guess, for Mr. Arns. This is a little bit of a, of a script that's happened from year to year. But one of the things we're facing with the budget that we're looking at as it's been proposed is an $800,000 vacancy credit, holding positions for our current staff to do essential services vacant in order to make ends meet. We're laying off, we've, we have closed 14 positions, five of which were occupied, in order to do essential services. So, and we did, however, work on that Affordable Housing Trust, or the trust, the housing study that includes the trust fund, which is a huge step for us to then look forward together. What has happened every year is we've had this conversation where Jump asked the city to finance the trust fund, and the city has said, "Well, we already put a lot of money into housing. Can you help us?" I have not been part of the conversations to plan that, the study, to go through the study. So my question to you is, has Jump, what, what we need to do is leverage what we have in the CDBG money and what we're doing with the city and grow, get extra money into affordable housing, which we all know. Has Jump already started working on helping us raise new money for affordable housing? Or has Jump pledged to help do that?
Actually, Councilwoman Heller, I cannot tell you the answer to that question because I actually sit on a different committee and I'm here reading a script tonight because I believe in housing. And I know the basics of this campaign, but I cannot answer that question for you tonight. I can say that housing is a question, a problem, that's been around a long time, and we all know about that problem. And we've been here asking every year, when we have the money at the end of the year to disperse, for some money to be put in a Housing Trust Fund. And we will continue to come and ask, and we will continue to fight for good housing for Topekaans, absolutely.
I just, we need help. And so I was asking whether there was a pledge coming the other way to help us make this happen.
Well, hopefully, when we have our next meeting for the budget hearings, you will hear someone who's actually on the housing committee answering that question and asking again for public funding, which is, we think, the cornerstone to making this happen. Because public funding makes things happen in this city. And when people see that the city is committed to providing more affordable housing, people will respond to that favorably. They know that it's a problem. Everyone in Topeka does, knows that it's a problem. And you know it's a problem. And the, the study has shown it's a problem. And exactly the context of that problem is being outlined. And I, I think your discussions in the next 60 days are going to be very important.
I think that Shanae Holman is, is the person that's standing right behind. And since we do have a public hearing and anybody can speak to us, I think that her desire is maybe to share with Councilwoman Heller some of the fundraising efforts that have been happening behind the screen with Topeka Community Foundation and other banks. Shanae, could you please approach the podium?
Yes. Thank you. I know this is different for you all. Normally, our grassroots leaders are here as spokespeople for us, but since we are in this pandemic and many of them are staying home, here, here we are. So I will just clarify for the body that we have been meeting, as the mayor mentioned, with local banks who have, there's a precedent for their regional and national counterparts to put money directly into trust funds. What they want to see, I think you'll remember Wendy Wells coming to speak in favor of the ordinance that was passed last July. Her bank is one of the banks that traditionally make large investments into trust funds in other cities. So we have been having those kinds of conversations so that we do have the private community at the table. And the other position that our committee takes on the fundraising effort is that we fund, as a, as a core value, we want to see our, part of our taxes go to something that we care so passionately about. And so that is why we always advocate for the dedicated revenue source. I think that Councilmember Duncan and some of our meetings have expressed the desire to research some of those types of dedicated revenue sources. But that is a fundamental position that we take as an organization, is that we believe that we have what we need within the city budget because of the tax dollars that come from our, 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 our members. And we would like to see those dollars, any, a portion of those dollars allocated. And so when Mr. Arns talked about the $2 million allocation, we all know that that's the goal that we've been working towards. But taking the first bite of that elephant means that whatever you allocate, it's the first bite, and we will celebrate that first bite. So that is the best that I can explain our position in terms of, of the fundraising and the partnership that we hope to see the Housing Trust Fund hold.
Thank you. I just, I'm, I'm really encouraged to hear that you guys have been out, helping to kind of get out on the street and work on our partners. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions? And at this point, yes, Councilman Duncan?
I just have a point of information for the people, I guess, who can't watch online right now. Turns out, we are not online. We are on TV, but we are not on anyone who uses the website to watch at the moment. There's some, so, yeah, so that's what I was gonna say. I believe you can still watch it on Facebook Live, although I don't know if they're watching it online, but maybe we could put this out online or something right now. And I think it'll still be recorded and be able to be posted later, so. Just wanted to toss that out there. I got a couple texts that said, "They can't watch you online." So, wanted to put that out there for everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I know that the body may have additional discussion, but I do want to encourage the public, if they do want to come and speak up, that they can do so as well. If anybody from the public would like to come and speak with regards to the budget, they can do so now. And for the third time, if anybody else in the public would like to speak to this item, they can come and speak to this item. Seeing none, council, this public hearing is closed. However, we can continue having discussions as a council body. Comments or questions from the council body with regards to this item? Councilwoman Valdivia Alcara, are you raising your hand?
Nope.
Oh, I just saw. Okay. Well, seeing none? Oh, Deputy Mayor?
Sorry, Mayor. Thank you. I didn't know if Ms. Lamendola was, was available for a question.
Yes, she is. Jessica?
Yep, I'm here.
Thank you. One of the things that we've discussed for the last couple of weeks, I actually think it was when I was sick, I was, I was listening to you guys, but I wasn't really participating that night. But we talked about the, the property insurance, the massive increase in property insurance. I think it was magnitude like $400,000. We have been paying to like a million or something now. I, I guess my question is, if we're gonna talk about amendments, would it, would it create a problem for you guys? Or would it help you if we created an amendment to cap the amount we spend on that? Or, or can, can you talk about that, please?
Sure, sure. Yeah, I, I don't, I wouldn't have the preference of limiting the city's ability to pay property insurance. You know, the process that we're going through, given some of the feedback we received at earlier parts of the budget process, is to expand our RFP committee when we're looking at the, the broker and risk management firm, so, so that the city can go out and rebid new insurance for 2021. So we're expanding the, the RFP committee to include an industry representative. So we think that that type of expert advice will be really helpful. And then, once that broker risk management firm is identified, then we will put out the process to obtain additional information regarding the 2021 insurance quotes. And so I think at that time, we can reengage with the governing body, let you know what we're hearing from our risk management advisor, along with what we're hearing from other communities in the state of Kansas. And so I think that that will add another level of transparency to kind of get at some of the concerns that not only the governing body has had, but quite frankly, the management staff and everyone that's worked on it, we were shocked as well and very concerned and frankly unhappy with the type of increase that we were kind of forced to absorb, given the non-renewal notice that we received in 2020 from the then-current provider. So I think the restriction, though, on the actual payment of it could be quite damaging to our ability to pay in the event the insurance costs come out to what we've recently been advised to expect. Any additional savings that we can achieve through a more robust process and refocusing on how we're doing business, we obviously can put back into the budget and we wouldn't spend in that way. And so that can either be used on other programs, that can be used potentially to offset any sort of variance in 2021, since we, you know, we are at a year with a lot of uncertainty. But I think, you know, it's a really great question, and it's one that management, we weren't happy with. We're working with the best that we have at the moment. But by expanding the review committee and committing to bringing that information back to the governing body as we go through the process, I think gets at the transparency that we're requesting.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions from the body?
Go ahead.
We're fighting over who gets to talk next. I just had two brief things. First is, we've had multiple conversations in some of our small meetings. Obviously, the grant writer position is no longer part of this, and I understand why and what the issues were there. And some of those duties have been put, put to other individuals in departments, and they've done a really good job. I still think I have some concern about us not having something in here, and I'm trying to find an offset. I don't have that yet tonight, though we, we put something aside in a line item for the ability to have resources available if we need to hire a, someone on contract, if an opportunity comes about that we don't have someone on staff who specializes in that area, or who can jump in and assist us with that. And so that is something I'm trying to look at to find an offset somewhere. I think in looking at some, what people charge, part of that is contingency-based, and so that feeds into some of that cost. Some of those grant writers, it's anywhere between, you know, Panpan with the grant is, several thousand dollars upfront, based on contingency. So we're not talking a lot. I think we could line that amount for $15,000, $20,000 to know it's there. So I'll try to look for some gentle offset somewhere that I can provide, but I, I do think that needs to be on our radar. My second thing is, and I don't, I talked to the city manager about this briefly, I don't know if this will need to be an official amendment or just something that can be done. One of the requests in there is for, by, to increase zoo, the admission to the zoo gate by $2 per child rate and adult rate. I have two concerns there. The first is, I absolutely do not think we should be increasing the rate on the child entry fee. Second of all is, I don't think we should be increasing the rate on our citizens of Topeka and Shawnee County, who are already paying taxes into that which the zoo receives. But I also very much understand the zoo's need to find some additional revenue for some of the programs. So what I'm proposing is that we do an offset of, maintain the current rates for citizens of Topeka and Shawnee County while allowing them to do the rate increase that they're requesting for non-county residents. I can't make it, it's not as simple to make it just Topeka, because they, they do track things by zip codes, but it gets a little funky when you're trying to do the zip codes because of where the city and county lines. But it's a lot easier to do it within the county. So if that needs to be an amendment, I will make it moving forward. If not, if it's just a change that can be made, and we can assure that's what will happen, then that's fine, too. But, but I just wanted to highlight those two things that I'd like to see us tackle. Thank you.
Ms. Lamendola?
I don't, I'm not sure, that would be at least a question for the official amendment, but the revenue projections were built based on the increase covering city and county residents as well. So we would have to look at the, the revenue side and potentially cut somewhere else.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a short list. Because we didn't get the answers to questions, many of them until yesterday, I'm not prepared with amendments, but I did think maybe to just share some food for thought in terms of what I'm thinking, but maybe others would, I've got one. I thought I would just share them this evening. One, I think overall, I hope as we finish this up, that we're all looking at the entire budget. City manager talked about the fact that the general fund is only $96 million of a well over $300,000, $300 million budget. It's less than 30% of the budget. So I hope that everyone will look at all of it, because it all has to do with taxpayer and ratepayer money, and it's all really important. The first item I wanted to mention is the fund balances. We've talked about them in a couple of meetings and, and got some answers. I've studied the replies from, from Finance and Jessica. Please correct me if I've misunderstood, but between the two different replies that we got, it appears that, that there, that the state expects us to, in effect, cash out the fund balances that are 100% tax dollar funded, which would be the general fund, the, let's see, I pulled it out, the, you listed them in one of these. And I pulled the wrong one. There were three. A liability fund and a, and a risk reserve, I think, were the three. So all of those make sense, at least the risk ones, to, to have the money pledged so we don't have to change the budget if we have to pay out a settlement.
Councilwoman?
Yes?
Pardon the interruption. Are these going to be your proposed amendments to the budget?
This one, I, I wanted to float and see what the staff would do first. But I, I do not have amendments tonight. These are eight points that I wanted to make.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure, because since you were going through the budget, I, I wanted to make sure that if you wanted some action taken, that we can move on to the next item. But pardon the interruption. Please proceed.
That's okay. Thank you. What I, what I, it is not true that we've traditionally budgeted almost all of our funds to cash out their balances to zero or close to zero. I've been on this body for some time, and I, not only have we not done it, but I, it concerns me, actually. And so I would like to strongly recommend to my colleagues and, and the staff that we go back into all of those three named funds and adjust those, the quote "other" lines that, I guess the details in the answer to Councilwoman Emerson, he asked about it, too. Adjust the other line to literally what the staff feels we might need for some unitemized purposes in 2021, and otherwise leave the fund balance in the budget as what we hope we will have in the fund balance at the end of the year. I think that's a, a much more accurate way to budget, as well as to understand what the intention was of the governing body when the, when the budget was passed. There, there are many funds involved in that, but I think it's pretty obvious when you flip through the book and then the, the budgets that we've been sent. The second item I wanted to address was just the, the issues of the personnel items that have been addressed so far. Instead of cutting funds, we have probably about $700,000 worth of salaries that were simply shifted, that the recommendation we have right now is to shift them out of the general fund and into some other specific funds. That worries me because that's still money, and overall, we're still gonna need to pay for it with taxpayer money. I think it's important to note that we, we are currently under a proposal for an $800,000 vacancy credit. And related to that, we have some positions that are frozen, that are very important positions that we need to fill. As I reviewed the budget, too, we, we had a variety of recommendations regarding the health fund and saying that it would be fine to move two physicians over, that, that the fund was healthy enough to handle them. Yet, when I looked back through the overall budget, there is an additional $600,000 coming from various other parts of the budget into the health fund next year. And so it's, it's, it's coming in secondhand. And so it's, it's coming in secondhand. We're still using general fund and other sources to pay for those individuals. The net of all that is that I think we need to come up with a million dollars to simply cover those. That won't quite cover all those pieces, but it will preserve that funding, take the edge off the vacancy credits and not put those funds at risk either. Utilities, speaking of looking at the whole budget. We've talked about utilities for years. We've just raised rates. I'm very concerned. I am not sure that there's anything we can do immediately in this budget. But I think we should consider tasking the city manager and lead staff that in 2021, we would put together a plan similar to what was done for streets ten or so years ago that would really look at how we could get, work our way through this city and get the water lines replaced and do it with cash. And I say that because, you know, when bonding became popular in city governments, it was back in the 50s when cities were growing. And so you bond because somebody else, there's going to be growth and somebody else is going to pay those bills by the time they all come due. It doesn't work when there's no increase in population or people to pay those bills or there isn't inflation. And we have seen that here. We're all so barred now from growing our city boundaries pretty much, although we're working hard to infill. I'm not sure that a half-cent sales tax would go as far with water lines and sewer lines as it has with streets. But there's no city in this country that was, that ever budgeted to replace what they had in terms of streets and utilities. It was always just growth. So we have to find another way. And I just hope that we can tackle another way because otherwise those rate increases are going to keep going and it's been high. I also, just for the jump folks that are still here, I know that part of the affordable housing proposal, one of the proposals was that maybe one-twentieth of a cent sales tax could go toward helping to fund that. If we are looking at a new sales tax, that one-twentieth, my estimate is it would produce about one point five million a year at today's rates. And so maybe that could be something that could be considered at the same time. The next item that I had was healthcare costs. I have, we are now about six years into our new expanded program of wellness and prevention as well as providing for health insurance. I think we might want to look at it further immediately or next year. I've done just some cursory comparisons between what we spend here at the city and what the county is doing. We each have about a thousand employees. There's more research that needs to be done, but it looks like we may be spending as much as two million dollars a year more than the county is and that their actual claim rates per capita are lower than ours. So we've really grown the staffing involved with that as well as how we do that program and we may want to look at it. One specific item that has come up before is asking the Parking Enterprise Fund to fund a hundred thousand dollars for the landscaping downtown. I've spoken up about it before. I still think that that's inappropriate. I'll be looking, as Councilman Duncan talked about, for an alternate source. But again, I look at, maybe we need to find that whole million dollars. I'll have a couple other small ones too by the time we start talking about amendments. The next item that I wanted to address was police. I'm very concerned there. The chief has worked so hard. We're going to have a lot of conversations, it sounds like, in the near future about policing and hopefully those will be really fruitful and insightful in terms of ways that we can deliver even better service than we have. But I'm kind of protective about deploying our uniformed officers on doing things besides policing. And a couple of the things that are suggested in this current budget, for instance, is to move code compliance over to police and have a uniformed officer be responsible for code compliance. The budget notes also indicate that animal control has been dropped by about fifty percent in terms of its employees, that there's been some conversation about farming that, contracting that out to Helping Hands, but at this point, the report is that they're not interested. So the solution proposed in this budget is to have a uniformed officer be responsible directly for animal control with a reduced staff. And I would just like to see if we can figure out some other way to do that to protect the time of those uniformed officers doing much more direct and traditional policing functions. There are, there are some other items in the budget as well that indicate that we would, in terms of volunteer programs and community outreach, that we would not be reducing anything, but we would no longer be using our civilians. And so I would just like us to look at all those things and see if we can't protect our officers. Next is anti-blite strategies. We had staff report to us that we've lost one of the inmate crews and we're not likely to get it back and we're very challenged about that. At this point, the money that used to be spent for the management for that has been taken out of the budget. We need a new strategy. You know, and as with other, many things in budgets, sometimes it's just money and sometimes it's a strategy. The Public Health and Safety Committee is, has been discussing code enforcement, which has included anti-blite at this point. Ideas on how we can just do better overall with blight and beautification in this community are welcome to the Public Health and Safety Committee. Overall, there is pretty common agreement that we just need to raise the bar on what we as a community feel like our community should look like. And that's, that's just real simple and overriding. We do need to replace the work that that crew did and they, they did a lot on what they, what the staff calls abatement, just going and picking up stuff out of people's yards as well as mowing in particular. Maybe there are some volunteer groups or some training, you know, youth training. I don't know what it is, but we need to figure out how we can replace that. If not, our, the city simply can't do as much as we did before. I think we need to improve owner responsibility. So in that, in that shift with the city, if we can get people to mow their own yard or clean up their own trash, we don't need to send city crews out to do that. And as I talk about that, we need to improve our collections. What we have learned at the Public Health and Safety Committee is that we are, the city is not collecting roughly five hundred thousand dollars a year of what is billed out to property owners for demolitions and abatements. And everybody thinks, oh, you just call the city, they'll come out and do it and they'll bill somebody and it'll all be fine. But it's not. We've been losing five hundred thousand a year. So if we can come up with a strategy so that we're not spending money on that, maybe it can be available for other things. And last, on IT, we've had a number of conversations about IT in the budget and the fact that it's even going up a little bit. But I had a question for city manager in that. I know that staff did a whole lot of work and turned in an application to the county today for some COVID CARES money. And I wondered whether, if we are funded for some of the things that are in there, whether that might offset some of the dollars that are in this year's budget proposal? If I can ask the city manager. City manager?
With regards to that, I mean, we're going to be looking at what we actually implement based on the amount of money that we receive. And so some of the items, especially in the IT area that have long tails for maintenance and so forth, you know, we're going to be looking at what we do with that. But remember, the expenses that we receive or what we get from CARES can't be for budgeted expenses that we already have. So we can't replace something that we already have in the budget with money they get for something we do. So it's really looking at the new items that we receive and how we would implement those.
Right. My understanding was it couldn't be what was in the 2020 budget, but these were things that they were suggesting from IT that we could do to help reduce touch, you know, client interaction and so on. And so I thought some of them might have been in the wish list budget.
But in there for this year, for '21?
For '21 or otherwise?
I can't think that specifically. I'd have to follow up with Mark and see if there are any specific items that were listed in the CARES Act application that he's looking at for '21. I don't, I have to go back and talk to him about that.
Well, I knew that we'd been kind of on the road to do a lot of consolidating of customer service systems and synchronizing bill paying online and so on. And that's what it sounded like.
I'm not saying that we aren't. I just need to go back and look at the specific programs and then look at what we were talking about in the proposed '21 budget. I need to do a comparison.
Well, maybe within the next two weeks, we'll have a better idea, right? Because I was encouraged that actually accelerating seems to be a popular thing to do with COVID money.
But clarification on that money. It has, does it have to be spent this year?
Yes, it has to be spent in 20, in nineteen, in 2020, excuse me.
Yeah, so it has to be spent by the end of this year. No, I'm just clarifying.
If it was done, if it was spent on something we were thinking we did this year, I was good with that.
I'm just, just clarifying.
Thank you.
Letting people know out there too that that's money has to be spent by the end of this year.
That's right. Thank you. That's it, Mayor. I just had those items that I was, thought were important to at least think about and consider whether there were ways we could make them better. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. If there is nobody else who would like to speak to the budget portion, we then would move on to item C. If the clerk agrees. The public hearing was closed.
My meeting was down this afternoon and because I called, they said I was only adjourned.
You're down for a public comment?
General public comment at the end of the meeting.
We need to have somebody sign up for public comment. Mr. Chris Easter?
Mr. Easter.
He understands.
Okay, yes. He still signed up for public comment after deciding.
Item C is discussion of impossible action on the 2021 proposed City of Topeka operating budget.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess at this point, through the discussions that we've had, if there are specific amendments that council members are interested in proposing tonight, we would be able to take those and consider them based on this particular item.
Comments, questions, amendments for the staff? Councilwoman Valeria Adel?
Thank you, Mayor. Is this the only night that we'll be able to do that? Any questions?
No, you can, we can do amendments on August 11th. But what I would suggest, it makes it much easier is if you plan to make an amendment on August 11th, it's better if you propose it to staff so that we can make sure that it's prepared correctly. Especially when oftentimes, when we're talking budget, the numbers are set. So if we want to add money to one area, we got to take it away from another area. And I would like the staff to have the opportunity to prepare what the impact of that kind of a recommendation, a request for an amendment would be so that everybody's fully aware of what the impacts are. So it could be August 11th as well, but if that's, and as Councilwoman Hiller is already thinking of some, you know, we expect that we get those with some time for staff to prepare response.
Got it. Thank you, Mayor.
Additional comments, questions, or amendments that the body would like to bring right now as proposals for our staff to evaluate? Okay, seeing none. There is no action then to be taken because there was nothing that was brought forward as a current amendment. Like the city manager said, we will have an opportunity to bring these amendments later on in August. However, I highly encourage that as you start having your amendments and you have some questions with regards to the budget, that you start, please sending those out to the city manager and to Ms. Lamendola so that we are able then to start modeling those in the budget in the future. Seeing no other comments on this item, we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the public comment. And at this point in time, we would like to call Mr. Chris Easter to come and speak.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Easter. All right. Yes, Madam Mayor and City Council and all the wonderful helpers here. I, this comment is so general that I want to address something that is definitely, has to do with budget.
Just speaking to the microphone.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I want to discuss something that's relevant to the budget, but it really has to do with the relationship between the city and the county. And as I have, was a resident here as a dentist from 1979 to 97 and then having left the city for 20 years to follow my crazy sons to basketball things elsewhere in Ohio. I'm now back after 20 years and I've been here for two years. And I'm trying to get used to how things work and the, especially the relationship between the city and the county. And it may touch on certain frictions that there might be. But I'll just read a letter that I am sending out to each one of the city council members, but I would like it to be read out loud at this time. So maybe it'll only take me four minutes. I might need a little more. This is apropos in that, well, let me just read. Respectfully to our city, county, council, women and men. So this is something that I want to say to the, that reflects on what we do with budget. It has to do with balancing the budget, but not really balancing line items so much as balancing the ultimate distribution of funds in the county for things and in the city for things. But because ultimately, you know, it'd be ideal maybe if we had one government. But that's been tried before I here in Topeka. So back when I was more busy with my practice and wasn't able to know really what, how the city moved, how it ran. But I hope the year has gone well for you, city and county council. This would be addressed in general to all. I hope the year has gone well for you and life's pace is not too overwhelming, but busy, fruitful and rewarding. We are at a very critical time in so many ways. We don't have giant infrastructure and commercial edifices of a past architectural age to demolish and then rebuild. We've never had that many valued institutional campuses besides the sprawling nicely presented SBL and the beautiful Washburn University buildings and grounds. What we lost in the widely known and influential Minniger Foundation of years ago, their hospital institution was staggering in its effect and potential. So we're at beginnings really again and we cannot afford to do anything less than start with priorities. And I refer kind of to momentum 2022 and the direction we're going and the feelings different people have about the distribution of funds, not about the balancing of line items, like I said, but the balancing of where does money go and what are their priorities? Oh, my goodness.
Just so have one more minute, sir.
All right. So what are the priorities as far as when you distribute more money to the county or to the city or who wants what? And is there kind of a grab bag thing and contention that ever exists? But I feel like what is good for the county may or may not be good for the city. It usually is. But what's good for the city is always good for the county. So I think there needs to be a priority in general in the way we look at the distribution of funds because of the centrality of the availability of things in downtown. So I'll go on if I may and then apply for four more minutes if I could possibly get it. So we're at beginnings really. We cannot afford to do anything less than start with priorities. Their nature, their value to the community as a whole, their architectural presentation, their geographic availability, their allure to visitors and home settlers, quote unquote, to innovators and so on. I want to suggest to you before this council meeting. May I apply for four more? Please?
Four more minutes? Okay, do we have a motion to extend? Councilwoman Ortiz makes a motion. Do we have a second? Councilwoman Nager, we proceed with the vote.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Baldvia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz? Yes. Emerson?
Yes, Emerson.
Padilla?
No.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
So we have eight, yes. Mr. Padilla voting no.
You may proceed, sir.
I want to suggest, I wanted to suggest to you before this council meeting that our downtown, and specifically South Shore Kansas Avenue, that may be a good place to start because it has to do with parks and something that people want everywhere in their corner and their, you know, uh, and specifically South Shore Kansas Avenue, including the River's Edge to 10th Street Kansas Avenue, is an integral part of the very heart and soul of the potential that is ours to build and commercially and socially develop. Unless we believe that and steadfastly make it our first priority, we will cripple the very soul and momentum that so many hundreds of average stakeholder Topequans like me and the numerous forward-thinking loyal entrepreneurs unnamed but known here will have spent their time on, and their energies and money doggedly pursuing and will have been in vain. The momentum will just dissipate. We simply cannot go forward, or rather backward, in priorities for our great city-county and expand on outlying amenities in southwest Shawnee County, for instance, one that's kind of a big deal right now, I think, in Shawnee County parks, which are already in place. Giving them more attention would be an economic and social distraction from the numberless benefits to all Topequans of centrally accessible, profitable, and most enjoyable venues that we so seriously need in the heart of our city, in the heart of our capital city. And talking about affordable housing, when we do things centrally as a priority, then it becomes available to all the enjoyment of what could be in these parks. And I'm talking to Stan Tech right now about my opinions because they asked for, for input. Stan Tech, who's designing our riverfront park. Expensive, time-consuming, and broadly-presented attractions must certainly be focused on the focal point, the focal street, the focal core, Shawnee County's dynamic core. In the future, our matured beginnings may give feasibility to more costly improvements in the county and outlying places. But if we want our county to be adjunctive to the diamond set in our, in our Adostro ring, then we've got to stay focused on the prize. It's our downtown. And we all know it, it's just hard to wait the right time. For all concerned, we all want our neighborhoods to be nice. Please keep your eyes on the first priorities prize. Sincerely, I, I am sincerely yours, Chris Deister. So, uh, I know there's probably, may not be many questions on that because of the time involved, but I just wanted you to know my heart and the heart of many, many other Topequans, just us normal folks out there. And I'm a normal folk that's back and glad to be back in Topeka. And I love you all and thanks for your work and good night. I just can't imagine the pressures you have on you. But please keep in mind that, that then the folks in affordable housing, wherever they are, they can access too, okay? Bye-bye now.
Thank you so much for your comments. We now move on to the announcements. City clerk?
There is no meeting on August 4th.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two announcements that I want to cover tonight. The first one is, is that the SPCP group, the Streeting Police and Community Partnerships Group, will be having their next meeting August 12th from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Holiday Conference Room, or Holiday Building First Floor Conference Room. And that's from 6:00 to 7:00 on August 12th. They will meet again on August 13th from 12:00 noon to 1:00 p.m. at the same location in the Holiday Building to have conversation with residents that may be interested on a number of topics such as accreditation, defunding, and demilitarization of police, training, and then basically answering questions that may come up from the audience. So that's scheduled for then. And the other thing, a new program that was announced, which is part of the money that we receive from our CARES grant through CDVG, was to allow people to get assistance for their unpaid water bills. So on Tuesday, August 25th, there will be by appointment only meetings with our staff to meet individuals that need assistance on their unpaid water bills. There are restrictions, so regarding income, eligibility, and so forth. If you are someone that may be interested and want to know more about the program, you can call 368-4461. I also emailed this flyer to the governing body today, so if they have individuals that are interested, and we'll be doing more in the way of a push out of this to the media and to others. It's a great opportunity to help individuals that are struggling through this time, through loss of revenue or et cetera, to be able to get some help for their water bill. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you so much. I want to start by apologizing to the council. A few last week after this meeting, not only Councilwoman Valeria Alcalá, but also other council members have requested that, members of the public have requested that we call a special meeting. And in doing so, immediately the day after, I got in touch with the city manager to start getting the ball rolling. And a constituent was, whom I have a good relationship with, was upset that they had not heard about a meeting coming up. And I let the person know, yes, I talked to the city manager the day after. This individual made that public, and then after it was public, then you guys found out through the back door. And that is never the right way for any of you to find out that I'm working with the city manager to have a meeting. So I want to publicly acknowledge that this occurred. I want to apologize to all of you, but just wanted to make sure that, that I addressed that. Today, the city manager and I had a short meeting to talk about how we were going to structure this. And Councilwoman Valeria Alcalá, in between meetings, I was able to see your email, and then talked about making sure that we have a conversation of Citizens Advisory Council, making sure that we talk about the independent police auditor, and as well, you were interested in having a conversation about immunity. So I want to make sure that I acknowledge all of those points. I, I also made sure that I mentioned this afternoon, this morning, that the day has been so long with meetings, so please forgive me, I'm not fully here, that, that we, we are getting into a point that I really would love to see us start talking about more action items in which we can start moving forward, because it is extremely important. Yes, we are seeing a lot of things in our, in the nation happen. And yes, as a community, we have a lot of work to do. But I, I'm looking forward to the moment that we can all sit together and have a meaningful conversation. We have to remember that as we're talking about these very delicate issues, we are talking about policy, but we need to do a little bit further than doing the policy work. I often tell people when I speak in larger groups that the Emancipation Proclamation was a policy statement, but it didn't stop the challenges that we're still dealing with today. We have to do a work of community and working together as a team, so that we could make sure that as a community, we can keep on talking about these things that have been happening in our communities all across the nation, that we all are knowledgeable, and that we start moving hearts to start working together. So I'm hoping that as we have this conversation on the 25th, and we will all, anybody in this group that would like to present, send me an email with any items that you would like to see addressed, let's, let's have a really positive conversation so that we could just start changing some hearts in our community, and not only making policy changes that, that are going to be a piece of paper, but so that we can start making positive changes and creating solidarity in our communities. Councilwoman Duncan?
Just two things, Mayor. First is, fill out the census. There's still time. Census.org. It's really simple, takes a minute. Our numbers are okay, but we could always do a little better. The second thing is, between now and our next meeting, there is an election, primary election. Please go vote. Get out there and do your civic duty. If you have any concerns or issues about showing up to the polls and being around other people on Election Day, always a good reminder that the Shawnee County office is open, and you can go do that Monday through Friday during the week. So get out there and vote between now and August 4th. Thank you.
There's no Councilwoman Lester. Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you for bringing up, all of you, the issues about policing and the, and our special meeting on August 25th, and point out that I, I had some back and forth questions about that today. And people who cannot, or for one reason or another choose not to come in person, can join those SPCP meetings on August 12th and 13th by Facebook Live. And, and that, and my understanding from that communication is that they can participate too, not just watch and send text messages. And so they're only an hour long, but it's a start, and they've got a fresh new SPCP group that wants to hear some, hear from some folks, as well as get some visibility and get going. So those two opportunities, and then the one that's coming up for all of us on the 25th are, are really important. Also, across the table, the chief sent out a list today that he's trying to put together in advance of the 25th. It was really a pretty good list. And so we can all key off that one too, perhaps, to finish it out. That's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valeria Alcalá?
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly would like to take you up on that. I, you know, I don't think it has to be an overlong meeting between you and I, but certainly to articulate some of what I've been hearing with numerous community meetings. I need to bring up something right now. It is not pleasant, but as we go through these difficult conversations, it has to be brought up. And I'm directing this to the city manager. I requested from you before this meeting, city manager, a call for an executive session to talk about personnel of non, personnel issue of a non-elected official, and you refused. Many of the people on this council yesterday and today have received emails from constituents, and these emails are public information. These emails state that a city judge gave serious opinions on a Facebook page, and numerous folks took screenshots of the now-deleted commentary. We know city judges sit in a quasi-judicial position, and my understanding is judges are not allowed to put themselves in positions of conflict with the public. So again, I am asking you to call an executive session on how this was handled. This is what I believe creates racial tension when we're talking about wanting to have open dialogue. When you have comments that are made about people of color by anyone, especially an employee that sits in a quasi-judicial position. If city manager, there is a continued refusal, please understand that I will bring it up at every Tuesday council meeting. Until we get an answer, and I hope other council people are interested in getting that answer, I will, I will just have to keep bringing it up. I understand, like you told me earlier, and I understand it, that employees work for you, and you have to be the one that does that that you're doing. But I also understand that you work for this council, and we are going through a very difficult time right now. All of us are, all of us across the city in different ways that are involved in this dialogue. And so that's it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, I want to say, I, I appreciate you setting, setting up the special session on the 25th of August. I'm going to publicly say that that is the week that I have slated to go on vacation. So I really have not decided if I will leave as I was going to leave, or if I'll leave the Wednesday afterwards. So I, I want to, I want to put that out there. We, we didn't get a chance to, you know, vote on a date or anything, so I'm sure I'll, I'll hear about it. Um, I also wanted to say that on Saturday, August the 8th, the East Topeka South NIA will be having a trash pickup, and they just need to bring their items to the curb. And I've been receiving a lot of feedback on that because we've been looking in our areas and we're seeing that it's starting to be really trashy. And then next, I wanted to say to the city manager, I appreciate the water, because I've gotten, received calls on their water bills, and people are still struggling. They're still out there struggling. And, and in that, I want to say that there is a pandemic EBT card, which will expire on this Friday at 5:00. It's this Friday, July the 31st. Yes, it will, unless they extend it. And all you have to do is go and type in P slash EBT Kansas. And these are for, these funds, this $291 are for all the low to moderate income students. So if your student went to a free or reduced school, you can get those benefits, but you have to apply for them. They're just not going to give them to you, and then they will send you a card with that amount on there. So I was told, and I'll double check again, July 31st is at 5:00, is the last day to apply. And it's per child, it's per, per child. So they're really trying to help the low to moderate income. If you already receive assistance, then you would automatically get it on your EBT card. But these are for people that are working and have not received, that do not qualify or are not receiving assistance. So I just want to encourage, it's a, it's a one-time thing right now. I just want to encourage them to do that so that they're able to eat. I also want to say that because of the pandemic, there's extra money with the gas company and everything. And so you can just get on there and you can apply. And it's a one-time, it doesn't matter that you've received LEAP. You, it's a one-time, and it's a very easy application, and it's a very easy, easy process. So we've got water covered, we've got electric covered, we've got gas, and now we have food for the kiddos covered. And I would just hope our residents would take advantage of that. Also, there is, and I'll let Tony hit on this, there's still host money out for our small business owners. And we've kind of set that to the side a little bit. I'm, this week, I gave out three applications. So we still need to push that, and I'll let Tony talk on that. But I just wanted to bring those things up because people are still struggling. They're still wondering what, what kind of help I can get. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Deputy Mayor?
Well, I guess I'm supposed to explain the host program now. Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. No, she is correct. Back when we originally, J-NO originally kicked off the host program, you might recall that, I think, the GTP staff, as well as, I, I think the mayor wisely said, hey, let's kind of, let's conserve our ammunition a little bit. Let's not blow all this million dollars in the first two months. This may be a drawn-out pandemic, which it has been. So the, the great news here is that we still have half the money left to allocate out in host grants. And, and I'm sorry, I, when I spoke to Mary Ann over at GTP the other day, she, she said still half the money. And I'm sorry, I don't know if that's 500,000 or 250,000. I think it's still 500,000 is available. So if people put in their host grants now, those checks will be sent out in September, and then there'll be a final round in October or November. So yes, Ms. Ortiz is absolutely right that there is still money there, and we want to get that, we want to get that out in the community. We want those businesses to hang on. We're almost through this, I really feel that. The second thing is, my wife and I were watching last night. It's, it's much more fun to watch other people on serve-onboards than to do it yourself. And we watched last night our, our local UST 450, our Shawnee Heights Board, and they went till like 11:45 or something. I did not make it that long. But, you know, I really appreciate all the work these unpaid school boards are, are doing. I mean, if we ever think our job is tough, right now, their job is tougher, I guarantee you. They were talking about, you know, making really decisions that impact so many families. So in the end, I thought they had a, I thought they came to a very good solution, kind of a hybrid thing. It was in the paper, you can read about it. But I just really, you know, a lot of you as a governor right now, with all the somewhat maybe dysfunction we see in, in the country at times, that's probably just a really make me feel good about local governments and, and the people who, who we entrust with these decisions. So I really appreciate the UST 450 Board and the 501 Board- So I really appreciate the UST 450 Board and the 501 Board and all the boards have done so much work on this. Lastly, as Councilman Duncan, I think I'd forgotten there was a primary election next week. So good luck, Mayor. Thanks. Good night.
I will echo on Deputy Mayor's comment on the local governing bodies working together. It is a delight. Every Wednesday at 9:00 in the morning, I have the privilege of meeting with all of our superintendents. And the way that they have come together to support each other, including Hayden and Care Parallel and different schools, it's just been spectacular to see them working. So much credit and appreciation to the work that they do. Councilwoman Padilla?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Nager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The one thing that Councilwoman Ortiz left out was high-speed internet for students, something that the city manager has been communicating with representatives at Cox Communications is making sure that students, especially those who qualify for pre or reduced lunch, that they have the opportunity to go ahead and get in touch and have good access to the internet, stable access to the internet rather than using data. If you are interested in learning more, the website, I hope that's showing up the right way, but it's www.cox.com slash the letter C, the number 2, and the letter C. And so please go ahead and reach out to them. There is also a phone number. That is 855-222-3252. We want to make sure that our kids are getting well-educated and what is essential for that now is good access to the internet. Especially, I know through 501, the kids have Chromebooks, but if you don't have any internet to connect to, then it's a moot point. So make sure you're getting in communication with Cox to go ahead and take advantage of this. There are no annual contracts. There are no deposits. It's free installation. It's a free Wi-Fi modem. And it can be $9.95 a month. And there's other ways to work with them as well. So please get in touch. Also, make sure that you are voting next week because it's very important to know that you and your interests and the concerns you hold are the same as the people who represent you. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Dobler, final word?
Yeah, I'd just like to say to Councilman Duncan that I voted about a week and a half ago. It was fantastic. It was on my kitchen table. No fears of the coronavirus or anything else. So I hope a lot of other people were able to take advantage of that. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. There is no other business in front of us this evening. We have Councilwoman Padilla showing us his screen that says be safe. And we will reconvene with you in two weeks. Have a wonderful evening all. This meeting is adjourned.